We'll call the meeting to order if we could stand for pledge and invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll have roll call. Allen?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Nistrovich? Reindell?
Here.
Ricks? Warren?
Here. In accordance with our charter and bylaws, if we could have a motion to appoint a chair for tonight's meeting.
I make a motion to appoint Dennis. He's already sitting in the chair, so.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Chair.
I just want to welcome everybody here tonight, so bear with me tonight. Can I get a motion to excuse Mayor Ricks and Mayor Pro Tem Mike Nistrovich?
So moved? Support.
And I need a motion for approval of the minutes?
We got a vote on that.
All in favor?
Can we, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All against, say nay. Motion passes. All right, can I get a motion for approval of council minutes from February 20, 2017?
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Say nay. Motion passes. Any comments from the audience? We don't have anybody here tonight, so we can move on, keep things rolling. Adoption of the agenda? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? All right, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Say nay. All right, items up for consideration. Our first item up for consideration is confirmation of fire chief. City manager?
Council is scheduled to consider confirming the appointment of Tom Garrant as fire chief for the city of Richmond. According to the city charter, the city council confirms the appointment of the fire chief, who is selected by the fire department so long as it remains a volunteer department.
Chief, you have anything you want to add to that tonight? This is a formality, I understand.
Nothing other than thank yous to city council, city manager, and of course, the membership of the fire department. Look forward to the second year.
And also, is understanding that the officer ranks stayed the same also?
They did, yes, they did. Everybody stayed the same in the same position. Curtis Spence, Assistant Chief, Rob Reindell, Second Assistant Chief, Gary Bertassi, Captain, Sean Kramer, Lieutenant One, Jeff Yelnitch, Lieutenant Two, and then Jake Cooker, Secretary of Tractor.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the appointment of Tom Garrant as fire chief for the city of Richmond in accordance with Section 7.13 of the City of Richmond Charter for a one-year term commencing on March 1, 2017, and expiring on March 1, 2018.
Support.
Any questions for the fire chief?
No, but I'd just like to comment that not only as a city councilman, but as a 23-year member of the department, the job that Chief Garrant has done this past year has been above and beyond exceptional. He walked into it with a lot of things to clean up and to fix. He's done them. Look forward to the next two years with him being our chief. Thanks, chief.
Thank you very much for those kind words. But again, you know, it's, by all means, it's not a one-man, one-man job. I've got six great officers with plenty of experience, as well as 24 other individuals that are firefighters or trainees. And I tell you, it's definitely a group effort in everything that we do. So I owe just as much thanks, and they deserve just as much thanks, as much as I do.
I'd like to say something. I really appreciate your openness and meeting with the council on the subgroup that we've had and trying to find different funding and working different vehicles and just thinking outside of the box for the city. I mean, that really, you really put the city first. I really appreciate that and your professionalism that you provide as well. It's been great to be a part of that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, I can't say, I can't say it enough, that it's a group effort. It's, everything that we decide, everything that is up here that we talk about is definitely stuff that's put together by, by our group, by the entire group.
Well, you lead it well. Thank you.
All right.
And I would agree, also being a member of the fire department in the past year, so you do a great job. And I hope to see you here next year, because I believe you'd have one more year after this year.
Yes.
If everything goes good.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. Motion passes.
Thanks, folks.
Congratulations, chief.
Thanks.
Item two for consideration is 2017 ground maintenance contract.
City council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2017 ground maintenance contract. The project was advertised and mitten, as well as The Voice. The city did receive five bids. The contract is for mowing and maintaining various city properties. Over the years, we have kind of adjusted that list. I think this year, that was the first year we did remove the DPWR, and we'll be doing that in-house this upcoming year. Over the years, we've, council has asked administration to kind of look at some of the properties that we're doing, so that one was removed. We're recommending awarding the contract to Tommy's Lawn Service. They bid on it in the past, and this year, we're the low bidder. Jim has done the reference check on them, and they have some good accounts that they're already doing and had good reviews from those people.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to award the 2017 grounds maintenance contract, 2017-GM-1, to Tommy's Lawn Service with the expenses charged to the appropriate line items of the general fund, major street fund, local street fund, TIFA fund, sanitary sewer fund, and water fund in the fiscal years 2016, 2017, and the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget with an estimated amount of $12,624.
Support.
Jim, you got anything you want to add to that?
Nope, not really, except that John mentioned, we are performing the DPWR in-house. I mean, that's kind of a, I don't want to say a sore spot, but my guys were more than happy to take that on when I asked if we felt we could do that ourselves this year. And that's a good filler. It's right at our yard, so that's what we're going to do.
Anything else, council?
No concerns with Tommy's never doing a municipality and knowing the kind of job that, not just for the city itself, but all the residents that's required? I mean, they understand that.
Yeah, this company did bid the project last year, and so I had discussed everything with him last year. And then the reference checked, all checked out. I asked him about municipalities. With the clients that he has, they may not be municipalities, but their, their standards are the same of what we expect as far as what everybody sees when they walk in the door, so I'm comfortable with them.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Item number three is consideration of 2017 water and sewer system materials.
The city purchases water and sewer material, system, system materials on an as-needed basis to handle repairs throughout the year. We bid out the sewer lead, water main, and water service materials as a contract each year. This year, Aetna Supply and HD Supply Company were the two low bidders. Jim's put together a motion for council to consider tonight, naming those two as the low bidders.
We have a motion?
Make a motion to award the sewer lead materials and water service materials to Aetna Supply Company, and the water main materials to HD Supply Company at the unit price submitted for the time period April 1, 2017, to February 28, 2018, with the expense charged with appropriate line item and the water and sewer funds.
Support.
Jim, you got anything on this one?
Not much. Next year, I was asked last year, actually, to try to simplify this a little bit. We bid this out to try to lock in prices, and there's some items that we ask for quotes as we need them. There's, the past bids were pretty lengthy and hard, I think, to quote, and so to try to encourage more bidding, we have already simplified the bid tab for moving forward, and we do intend to make it clear that we're going to award it to one company, one supplier, in hopes, again, that we get better prices maybe across the board, because they know they're going to get all three versus having to kind of hedge their bets on which, which section they would get. But it's, it's a benefit to the city, that's why we do it, try to get prices that we, we know we're, we're going to pay.
That's what I was going to ask. Is it beneficial to do it like this? I mean, with the, Aetna getting two of the three, and one just with a $600 difference to be a sole source supplier to you? I mean, I don't.
This year, we believe it is, although in the past, there's been some companies that can't bid both lists, because the list was so long. We were bidding things that we very often didn't use.
Okay.
And it was kind of a little overkill on the list, so Jim, kind of the last couple of years, has been tracking it, and we believe that next year, we'll be able to pare that list down, that companies can bid all three components. We didn't quite get there this year, but we will next year.
Pretty close. Yeah, I mean, because within, sometimes it's easier to just make one phone call as opposed to, you know.
Yeah, kind of going through the list, we realized, hey, if we haven't used something like this in 10 years.
Right.
If we need it, we'll, we'll call and get a price on it versus having it.
I appreciate getting the bill bank for a buck. I just, I mean, as far as doing business sometimes.
Yeah, I know they're close, but the bid was clear this year that you could, it would be awarded individually. I just essentially didn't think it was fair. They were low, and I didn't think it was fair to say, well, even though we told you this, we're giving it to all the one company. So that's why for this year.
No, I trust you, and I was just asking.
Yep. Anybody else? And again, I have been asking the audience, there's nobody here, just everybody goes on in the background here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Item number four, bid award 2017 aggregate material supply. Can I get a?
City council is scheduled to consider awarding the aggregate material supply contract. Again, it was advertised in both mitten and The Voice. The contract is for the purchase and delivery of 23A limestone and clean fill sand to the DPWR on an as-needed basis.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to award the 2017 aggregate material supply contract to TR Peperzac at the unit price of $13.50 per ton for 23A limestone and $6 per ton for fill sand.
Support.
All right, any discussion? Jim, you got anything on that one? Pretty straightforward. I think we've used Peperzacs in the past.
Yeah, I don't know if they've had this contract, but we've used them as a contractor in the past before.
No audience participation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five, consideration of adopting a roadway assessment management plan.
City council is scheduled to consider adoption of a roadway asset management plan for all streets under the jurisdiction of the city. This document is intended to show what strategy the city is using for its roadways and to identify funding goals to meet this strategy. The roadway asset management plans have been recommended by legislation since 2007, but MDOT has not yet made it a requirement for the receipt of Act 51 funding. As council is aware, through the budgets over the years, our Act 51 money comes to the city, and then we have a certain percentage that we can spend on major streets, and then another percentage that can be spent on local streets. What Jim has done a lot of research this past year on is for those communities that adopt a plan that kind of covers you for a three-year period, as long as you have an approved plan, approved by both the council and approved by MDOT, we'll submit this if it passes tonight to MDOT. Once you do that, then you kind of have more local control over where you spend your Act 51 dollars on. So if you feel that, you know, more of a percentage should be spent on local streets this year because you might have a big local project, this plan will allow you to do that, and you're not limited by the strict letter of the law. And so by doing this, it gives more control back to the council and to spend money on the streets that you feel need it, not necessarily what the formula says. I don't believe there's a lot of communities our size that have plans like this, so again, hats off to Jim for kind of moving us in a direction where we probably will, you know, a lot of communities will have to be doing this in a couple of years. We're doing it a little, a little earlier.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the city of Richmond roadway asset management plan as presented and to authorize the plan to be submitted to MDOT for approval.
Support.
Jim, any, you want to add to this?
Well, I mean, certainly, as the street administrator, my job is to do the best, what we can do for the roads for the, you know, the lowest amount of money, and an asset management plan, that's really the primary goal, is to make sure our strategy is upfront and clear for transparency, you know, to counsel them to the city, so everybody's comfortable, including MDOT, comfortable with our strategy. And as John mentioned, by having this strategy that's approved, MDOT says, we trust that you are spending the money the way it should be. So typically, the way the, the formula works, that John mentioned, you get more money per mile of major streets than you do for local streets, so there tends to be an excess of major street funds, if you will. So the transfers that we're limited to now, you're no longer limited. If we feel there's more, a greater need on local streets, we don't have to hold out or we don't have to ask MDOT for special permission to make these transfers, and so it gives us a little more local control. So I'm certainly excited. This has been on my list for really two years. I've had a reminder in my outlook calendar, so I was excited to put this together and try, do some tracking. It's interesting to see what we've been spending and how, kind of how we're stacking up on where I believe we should be. So I'm excited. I hope council is happy with what we're doing.
I have a question. So some of these streets that are now green, do they become green because we did that, I don't know.
The crack ceiling?
The crack ceiling, that's.
That map there, I believe, was before. I actually kind of had to backdate that history, because you're 100% correct. If we do, the way Roadsoft is set up, and that map is out of Roadsoft, which is an asset management program that MDOT prepares and updates, creates. As we do improvements, it does update that as a kind of a guide. So when you look at that map right now, you know, it's rated as 1 through 10, and after you do crack ceiling, they kind of automatically updates it to 7 or an 8.
Okay.
And then this map, 7 rates green, but, but that's more of a visual to show you what streets are in fair to poor, you know, in a good condition. And really, we're, we're doing pretty good for communities our size. The response I received from MDOT in preparing this plan and the data that I showed them, they were pretty happy with how we said as a community, and pretty happy that we were even preparing a plan, because like John mentioned, communities our size in particular are somewhat behind the eight ball. So the fact that we're, have some funding that we do between, are, equal the two mills between TIFA and the general fund that goes to this is really testament to our community, you know, as a, as it is the council, and wanting to spend money on our streets.
Okay, thank you.
The plan looks great. Question I had is, in the three-year plan that you have, the list of certain roads you're projected to do, do you have to stick by that letter? So that's just a, a best guess?
Yeah.
Where you think you're going to be? That can be adjusted as you see a need?
Yeah, certainly. To project out too far, really is a waste of time anyway. But yeah, conditions change so quickly, things come up that you're making a priority. Say, an emergency water main replacement would certainly make that road a priority to, to reconstruct or.
Okay.
Or develop something. So yeah, this is just a guide. MDOT would like to see some future planning. We have to do that already as part of some reports that I do. We have to do a three-year plan, because it goes into a statewide plan, so they want three years. It certainly can change. There's no, no requirements.
All right, great.
Anybody else? That's all I have.
I just want to say that I think it looks really great. I was very interested to read this, because I find that, that's one thing that I hear a lot of from the residents in the community is, you know, concerns about roads. And so I found this very, very interesting. I was also wondering if this is approved by MDOT? Is it possible that there could be a link to this on the city website?
Sure.
Okay. That's all.
Anybody else? No audience participation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Say nay. Motion does pass.
Thanks.
Number six, consideration of well number four cleaning.
The city's past practice has been to clean and inspect wells on a 10-year intervals. The current fiscal year budget included costs to clean and inspect well 14. However, looking at some of the data we were getting from our testing of the wells, indicated that probably well four this year needed to be bumped up on that list, and well 14 could go a few more years or at least one more year with, with cleaning. So kind of in, in the process of examining the data that we were getting from our wells, Jim is recommending that we switch from well 14 to well four for the cleaning. Jim did get various proposals from both Lane and Peerless, or, I'm sorry, Northern Pump and Well and Peerless. The bids sometimes come in with different components, so the Northern, the quote from Northern Pump is the low bid. There's just certain, you have to kind of read through the bids and take out, and make sure that you're comparing apples to apples. So there's a bit of confusion on the background, but they are the, the low bid for the cleaning on well four.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to authorize a Northern Pump and Well to clean well four for the amount not to exceed $12,630, with the expenses charged with appropriate line item within the water fund.
Support.
Motion to support. Jim, anything on this one?
John mentioned the city, our, our past practice was every 10 years to clean individual wells, so on a rotating basis, we have seven wells. And that's not a bad practice, but we did implement in 2016, starting to test, so every other year, we're actually going to do some flow testing on wells, and that'll allow us to build up a history and identify if a, a well needs work either sooner or, in my opinion, likely later, so we could potentially go a couple more years before we'd need to pull the pumps, because it's expensive to do a full cleaning and rebuild is approximately $30,000. So if we extend that one or two years even, every cycle, that's significant. And we found that well four, even though it wasn't up, because it has recently, a few years ago, actually had some work done on the motor, the aqua for itself needs work, and after some discussion, we felt that's the best benefit. The problem is, if you wait too long, you actually can lose the rechargeability of a well, so you could permanently damage the production rates of a well. So well 14, which was up, the well itself is doing very well. There's some wear to the pump, but nothing critical, so we certainly believe that can go another year, and that'll be in next year's budget.
Where is well four, Jim?
Well 14 is the one that's at roughly 33 and low plank.
Right.
Well four, the one that we're recommending cleaning is the one, is one of the two in the DPWR.
In the DPWR.
And cleaning, is that the, like the?
Like the casing pipe, and there's a screen at the bottom that would, where the water comes in, that in particular is what gets.
The iron algae on it, or?
It's really, in our case, more of a mineral buildup that's naturally in the groundwater, not so much iron and not, not algae, but it's a mineral, calcium. We have hard water, so, which is good in a lot of cases for the system, but that builds up on the screen, so.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Say nay. Motion does pass. All right. Number seven, consideration of cemetery rules.
The cemetery rules and regulations were last updated in 2004. However, in 2015, at one of our workshops, we, council administration met out at the cemetery, walked through the cemetery, and took a look at the rules, not only our cemetery rules, but we also looked at them, because they were the base of the pet cemetery rules that we were putting together at the time, and noticed that there was some discrepancies on really what they should be saying and what they were saying. And so we made those changes. We also made the changes in the rules to, for the new city hall address, things like that. And so the document before you are those minor changes that we've made.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the revising the cemetery rules and regulations.
Support.
Motion is supported. Any discussion? Jim, you got anything on this you want to add, or?
It's all pretty straightforward. It was all discussed, really, almost two years ago, when we were doing the pet cemetery stuff, so just kind of wait until it's a good time to bring it up.
Anybody else have anything? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Say nay. Motion does pass. All right, city manager, comments?
Just in front of you tonight, for those that haven't turned them in already, are the calendar pages for April and May. At the next meeting, we'll be, need to schedule the budget workshops, and so if you can get those filled out and turned back in. Also, in the email that I sent out with those last year, we did kind of, for two of the budget workshops, go to a format where we met the same night as the regular meeting. We'd meet like at 5:30, and from 5:30 to 7:00, do budget break for the council meeting at 7:00, and then if we needed to, go back to the budget workshop. That worked very well for the council members and staff that gave, provided feedback on that. So we're hoping to be able to do that again with the second meeting in April, and then the first two, or the two meetings in, in May would be a possibility. But in case one of those doesn't work, or we need a fourth, we still would like the pages filled out, just in case.
That's all I have. All right, council comments? Jamie?
Boy, we have amazing athletes. I know probably Councilor LaFleur is going to comment on it, but what an exciting two weeks this has been for us, and just congratulations to both of our teams. They were very successful and just proud to be a Richmond person this week in sports. So great, great job.
Emily?
I just agree with Jamie. Congratulations to all of them.
Jim?
I too. I agree with Jamie. And bowling team.
Yes.
Yeah, include, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, they made the state.
Yep.
Made states and team and individual.
Yep.
So a lot of good things going on.
Mm-hmm.
Rob?
I just want to thank Jim for filling up our agenda for this evening.
Yeah, thanks. He had a commitment the last meeting, and so it's kind of all piled on in this one.
Well, we got everything handled for you for a little while. And wasn't part of the Monday night budget workshops that you did last year, but that sounds like a great idea, knowing what we, in the past, trying to, when I was on council, trying to arrange times and dates for everyone. That sounds like, when I saw the email, it sounded like a great idea, so I'm all for that, if that works for everybody. And yeah, go Blue Devils. It was fun and exciting times.
Yeah, I agree with everybody. It was great, wrestling, winning the state championship, girls taking second in the state. It's been quite the year with softball, winning the state championship. They came that close to having three of them within the next year. So we saw that spring sports, and maybe they can do it again and keep things rolling. It's good for the community and good for the schools, so. I believe we got, do the calendar? All right, March coming up, tomorrow night, we got Recreation Board, 7:00 PM. And then we, on the night, we have Planning Commission meeting at 7:00 PM, and the BCA meeting at 7:00 PM.
Uh, no BCA this.
No BCA? Okay. Let's go with the circled one. And then on next Monday, the 13th, 7:00 PM, Library Board meeting. 14th, 7:00 PM, we have the Cable Commission meeting. Then on the 16th, Thursday, next week, we have EDC meeting at 7:00 PM also. And then on the 20th, Monday, next scheduled city council meeting, we'll meet here at 7:00 PM. And then on the 22nd, Wednesday, we have a TIFA meeting at 7:00 PM here. And that covers that, and I have a couple items here. We got the Rex Department, Pizza in the Parks, Wednesday, March 29, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM We got the Rex Department, Pizza in the Parks, Wednesday, March 29th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Festival Drive. And then also the 22nd Annual Easter Egg Scramble. That's Saturday, April 8th coming up. BB Street Park begins at 10:30 AM sharp.
Yep, and the Pizza in the Park event is to get public input on the Recreation Master Plan, so we're inviting the community to come out. And it's not a, an event where you're going to sit and listen to presentations. You come into the room, and there's maps of our various parks, and you just kind of go from station to station and write down your comments on each park, what you think works, what you think doesn't, and, and we take all of that public input and give it to the rec board as we go through and get our master plan done.
All right. We do have a closed session tonight. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to convene in a closed session in accordance with Section 8 of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended, for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. If either negotiating party requests a closed hearing.
Support. Can I get a roll call vote?
Green?
Yes.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Ms. Stravich is absent. Rindell?
Yes.
Rix is absent. Warren?
Yes.
And Allen?
Yes.
We get a motion to reconvene?
I make a motion to reconvene and open session.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Motion does pass. Other business, looking for a motion to approve the tentative agreement with the police command, city manager.
It's there under other business on the blue sheet.
I make a motion to approve the tentative agreement with the PO LC slash command.
Support.
No discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Motion does pass. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks for coming. All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming, though.